Okay.
All right, so being five oh four, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and held remotely on Zoom and live streamed on RCTV. The RMLD Board of Comptender, the RMLD Board of Commissioners recognize the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items in the official agenda. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address. Prior. Oh, you have moved it.
Yeah.
Prior speaking is the role of the Chair in maintaining order in all public comment and ensuing discussion. I would ask all members and participants to state their name that are participating remotely. Yep, Ray, you're on mute, but we heard you.
I'm Ray Porter, hi.
All right, all right. All votes must be taken by roll call. Right.
And this one first.
Yep. So first item on the agenda is develop the interview questions. In the room, we all have the questions in front of us, Ray, do you have the questions in front of you?
I don't have them in front of me.
We can, I'll read them, so that.
All right.
Yep, go ahead. So. Question one. Question one, we already opened the meeting and we already went through the official statement that we did to the Board, so. Question one that we have is explain the time when you quote-unquote made it happen. But to complete the urgent, explain the time when you made it happen to complete an urgent task and deliver results. What challenges did you have to overcome? How would you relate this experience to being the GM at RMLD? Does everybody like that question?
Good opening question.
Excellent, okay, that's a check, where's the keeper? All right.
Bob, can I just stop you for one second? The opening remarks were new too, because you guys had asked him to add that. And.
Could that get into the main experience?
Okay, sure, I will repeat the question. The opening remark, Bob, thank you for your interest in working at RMLD. We'd like to begin by asking you to tell us about yourself and your public power utility. I would scratch or add your public and private power utility experience that led you to apply for this position.
Public or private?
Public or private.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because some of them may not.
That's correct.
Agreed.
So we're gonna require people with utility experience, right? So we're gonna filter out people without utility experience?
Yes, yes, that is, I see that as a must as a candidate. It is an absolute must. You have to have experience in this industry, whether it's municipal.
Public.
Public, yeah. Yeah.
That was stated in our request for the position that we, as we went through the list last time, there were four bullets and like three of them had to do with being able to deliver power, so. I think, I agree with you, Bob, it's a must, and it's stated in our request for a position that that's, they demonstrate that.
Question two, what do you see as one or two major challenges RMLD faces? And how would you address those challenges?
I like it.
Yep, and that bodes to someone doing a little bit of research, right? If they, if they are blind on that, that means they didn't do anything. I would expect somebody who's interested in this position to have gone back through, read some meeting notes, watched a few Board meetings, you know, have some understanding of what this place does and is like, so. That's basically checkbox that, did you walk in unprepared? Question three. RMLD is a.
Thank you, system.
Sorry, yeah, I just gave you the red line so you could see what I changed from last time according to your asks.
You can go down to the bottom of the screen where it has the Zoom button on the very bottom of the screen that you're looking at, and there's three little icons, right? In the left, go to that one, yeah. It's that one. Yeah, where the other one is. No, where the other one?
Yeah.
One of them puts a, there you go.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So what that does, it just takes all the other stuff out of the way. So question three, RMLD is a union-based organization with three unions. Our organization is currently in challenging contract negotiations with all three unions. Please describe your philosophy and experience in dealing with collective bargaining. How would you feel best supported as you serve as the point person for these negotiations?
Should we say challenging?
Yeah.
No, it's more information than necessary.
Yeah.
I think by definition, negotiations are challenging. I don't, if anything, it's redundant, but I don't think it's, I think it's fine.
Okay. Scratch, scratch, cancel me.
It's already gone.
Yeah, question four, what is your approach to managing operations and budgets in a dynamic energy industry? Do you use any particular technology, technological tools to organize yourself and your organization workflow and budgets? Maybe we could rephrase this. And, you know, do you use any particular tools to organize yourself, period? What experience do you have with applications to manage?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I really care what tools he uses, we already have tools. We're not really expecting him to deliver software to our, to our financial director. To me, it's more of setting priorities and making decisions than finding out he uses Excel or he uses, you know, some other base tool. I'm not sure that's the driver. I don't think we wanted to come in and change our platform. What we wanted to come in and versus energy, labor, how, control costs, how we make decisions to deliver power and control costs. And those are, aren't tool-based, they're, they're priorities.
Focus on the first question, and the second question could be a follow-up if necessary.
So I also thought that we talked about, how would you, this was yours, how would you manage operations and budgets in a challenging, dynamic energy industry? I thought that's what you had said.
Yes. I think if we added, if we stretched the second sentence and we change it to something along the lines, what would be your strategy to organize the budget and operation for RMLD?
I think my original comment question was, how do you manage operations? How do you manage finances and how do you manage people?
So those. Go free, yeah, 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 I think that's a very, what would be your strategy to manage?
People, finances, and, yeah, and operations.
And operations, yeah, that's a perfect way to state it.
Do you want me to, do you want me to go back to that?
Yeah.
Do you want me to go, go back, could you give me that one more time? What would be your strategy?
What is your approach, what's your approach to managing operations, people, and budgets? That's what you want to change. Dynamic energy, my.
To manage operations, people, budgets?
Yeah.
Yep.
And just to add, I think one of the things that maybe I got in my head was we're currently looking at enterprise systems to do a lot of these things, like with the tracking of hours related to projects and that kind of stuff, and I think we were, I was thinking that maybe we were looking to see if somebody used something like that.
But that's something, but they should volunteer, they should volunteer that information. It could be a follow-up, it could be a follow-up.
So do I take off the last question?
Yeah, please.
The one experience, so what you have is, what is your approach to managing operations and budgets in a dynamic energy industry?
Managing operations, people, and budgets.
Well, okay.
But two questions, the first one highlights.
Okay, got it, all right.
The first one is, what is, what is your approach to managing operations and budgets in a dynamic energy industry? What would be your approach to manage operations, people, and budgets?
Okay.
It's the same kind of.
Same thing. Okay, done.
Yeah, okay, so what do you want?
I will just add people to the first question and.
Yep, we call it a day. Yep, yep, I agree, couple of second sentences, people and. We can always extract, that's a good conversation.
What is your approach to managing operations, people?
Again, going to my search.
Absolutely.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Question five, in your leadership positions, how have you contributed to your employees feeling valued? What states have you taken to strengthen teams?
How is, how is that different from the?
It's not two different from, from above, that's managing people. I think question.
I guess one is, one is negotiating contract, I think another one is managing people in post-negotiation. I can see maybe it's, it's different in the sense that, how do you negotiate a contract with unions? And then how do you work with unions? Once the contracts are done, that could, could be a slightly different emphasis.
I'm almost ready to scratch five. We can come back to it, I put a question mark on five.
It could be a follow-up, the question.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, I think it's part of a extraction type follow-up.
Does everybody want to get rid of it? Get rid of it now.
Put hands up, yes or no? Keep it or kill it?
We can kill it.
Yeah, can kill it. And keep it in my back pocket over four A.
Yeah, four A.
Four B.
Four A. Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so now the new question five. How would you influence culture as a general manager of RMLD? How could the Board of Commissioners and the Citizens Advisory Board support a positive company culture at RMLD?
I like it.
Can I keep it? Question seven, in a managerial role, we must do tough things. Tell us about difficult situations. Please tell us about difficult situations that you have encountered. That you haven't gotten. What unpopular decisions did you have to make? Explain those situations in detail and how you dealt with them. I think that is a crucial question because that's, that tells how you can manage things. Did you have to downsize? Did you have to discipline? Did you have to, you know, handle, you know, a tragic situation? You know, whatever that may be, I believe that's a very important one to discuss. And it's not all, it's not all flowers and sunshine, right? As in our day-to-day, you know, dealings and working, I think that's important.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now question eight. How do you deal with surprises and challenge, and challenges? Give us an example of people faced with a professional challenge that was not anticipated, and tell us how you responded. What did you learn? What would you do differently?
That's gonna be question seven now, just to be.
Yeah.
Yep. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Excellent, question nine, and then someone has to do a crumb roll before you ask it. And then you say, why do you want this job? And why do you believe you are the best candidate for this position? So that's, that's the opportunity for any candidate to sell themselves.
You do the big problem.
I could, if we need to practice, what needs practicing, so. It's, it's important. No, I think that that's a, a good series of questions that, you know, if you, now, if you just said, if you're just mapping something out, you have nine questions, it takes, you know. Okay, eight questions, and if you're talking five minutes a question, it's forty minutes per interview, right? This is preliminaries, right? This is a, you know, this would go down, right, on the final. But you're talking, so just to give everyone kind of an idea, these, you know, thirty to forty-five minute interviews probably per candidate, you know.
I mean, last time we did what, twenty minutes per person?
Yeah.
But that's in public.
That's in public, yeah, they're a little bit longer and, and the idea is, we wanna, you really wanna get a feel for somebody. Okay, I think.
So forty minutes each?
Well, I mean, you, that's what you're.
So what are you thinking?
I think we're good?
No, forty-five, forty-four.
Oh, how many, for each?
Yeah. Each candidate.
Some people are talkers.
Yeah, well, that's what you want.
And I think that, yeah, and I think that goes away. I mean, you're gonna get some people that aren't that comfortable interviewing, that are gonna make it short. And I would say anywhere from twenty-five minutes to forty-five minutes.
Yeah, it could be, you know, okay, just, just.
And all questions don't need to be five minutes.
No, they could be real quick, because it could be done in one, blah, blah, blah. So just, just kind of, just set the tone, if you did ten people, that's ten hours, right? So just, I understand, right, just roughly. Okay, I think those are great. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Upcoming scheduling, next meetings, there is one other thing, Ray, I'd like to discuss. What I'd like to do is, as, as we're going through the candidates, I'd like this, this subcommittee to come in and talk to the employees of RMLD. This is, this is what my idea is. I think we come in and have like a breakfast with different groups of employees. And those groups would be, you know, put together by different functions in, in RMLD. Again, I don't know what groups are better, you know, to each group, right? I would lean on Patty to set that up. I would like to talk with, again, it would have to be only two of us from the committee, right? Because you can't have a quorum, right? So we could rotate who could come through, and we do that from like seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning. And this, they have like coffee and bagels, or whatever, you know, sit down, talk for like an hour. And, you know, like Vivek, why don't you say what you're, what you'd like to, you said it very, very well. If we were in there, you know, we're not here to, we're here to see what you wanna see as a vision for.
Yeah, because we need to be sensitive to the fact that negotiation is going on, union stuff, right? So the idea is to basically get people's opinion about what, if they had to imagine what RMLD can be like or what they think, you know, they, so it's a, it's a little bit more forward-looking in what kind of organization they would like to see. And recognizing the constraints one deals with here.
And, and, you know, it's a free form, right? It's not, because there's only two of us, there's, there are only two from this committee in each one of these meetings. It doesn't have to be, it's private, right? I would ask that, it's just the employees of the group, their, their management would not be in there in that group. We'll do the management group separately.
For non-republicans, not public.
Yeah, these are non-public meetings, and we, however many we need, I'm thinking four, roughly. You know, I, it could be three, you know, but I'm thinking four. And we would just do them seven-thirty to eight-thirty over the next, I would like to do it over the next couple of weeks because that's, that falls in line with.
After NEPA.
After, we could even do, you know, I know it's Wednesday now, maybe we could throw in one Wednesday of next week.
Just after NEPA, that's NEPA Day, so that's.
Next Wednesday is NEPA?
Yeah.
Oh, NEPA's next week.
NEPA's next week, NEPA ends Wednesday morning, but I won't be back until.
Okay.
Later that week.
I'll be back Friday, Tuesday night.
Okay, maybe the first one, we could do.
Thursday.
The Thursday, I couldn't do Thursday, I could do the first one this twenty-second. So let's just map out a few, just talking here, let's say the first one's Friday, the twenty-second.
Friday, a lot of people are in this one. Are working. Yeah, the building's.
Not Friday, not Friday, twenty-second, not Friday, twenty-second, no, uh, we go. If someone wanted to do, I couldn't do the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, but someone else? If someone could do one of those two days?
I could do the twenty-first.
You could do the twenty-first, okay. With the twenty-first. Ray, or?
No, I, I can't, I could do the twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth, but I can't do the week of the seventeenth to the twenty-third.
Okay, so.
Can you do the twenty-first?
Okay.
Two of us.
Okay, so Patty. Vivek. Well, twenty-first, then we look at the next week. If Ray, you could do the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth. Yes, I could not, with any.
I could do twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we could do the twenty-fifth.
Twenty and me.
Okay, Vivek. Ready?
Twenty-sixth, you can do the twenty.
I could, I could do the twenty-sixth. The twenty-seventh, we have a meeting again, that, I think that's tentative. I'm gonna look at my work schedule here for a second. Calendar. That week. I could do the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth. With somebody, either, whatever day works better for.
I could do either of those days, Bob.
Okay.
You do the twenty-seventh.
I'll do the, we'll do the twenty-seventh. That's Bob and Ray. Okay, that's, Bob and Ray, sounds like comedy team.
Does, certainly does.
And then if we just put in another one for the following week is, now we're into that Slaver Day. So the following week could be, say, I don't want to touch Tuesday, because that's a back, back-to-work day. So Wednesday or Thursday, September third or September fourth. And if Vivek, you did two, raised on two. Pat, are you available, if you and I could do?
I'm on vacation for two weeks, it's a staycation, but.
No, you're on vacation.
Oh, no, I was just getting things done at home.
No, no, you're on, you're on vacation, so.
Because you have meetings, I'm still coming in, so.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, that's why I volunteered, I said I have the time.
Okay, so if I did that with Patty, on, what day, I would prefer the third? That's Wednesday?
Yeah.
So that makes four, and each one of us would be attending two of those. Okay, so that's, I feel a balanced group, okay? Now, the next thing would be thrown out, like, who, who would be in those, those meetings? Which, from my perspective, I, I don't know how the groups all interrelate. The engineering, you have accounting, you have purchasing, you have IRD, you have line, you have metering. I, I think management, so I think potentially try to do, break it up, if we need another one for management, that's different, because it's really not that many in the.
Or enough.
Yeah, or enough, yeah, I think, but okay. You wanna take a crack at, put the group together, and then we'll do, that would be seven-thirty to eight-thirty?
Okay.
With coffee and bagels. Maybe some nice egg sandwich just with bacon. Just saying, they're nice and big, we cut them in half, I'll eat half of one, big or small, or, and or, bake a host of bagels up the street. Not dropping anything, I'm just saying, so. All right, so we'll, we'll put those out, and that'll be our schedule, if you could put that into the.
That.
Yep. Over the next couple of weeks, and that, that works well with everything we're doing, and we can all give each other feedback as we continue talking. You know, what we find out, I think that would be very important. We can, it may not have little things, qualities here on the sheets, right? Some for us to just reference. Good. And, yeah, I think that, that would be good. Okay, all right, so our next meeting for this committee, we have been doing Wednesdays, understanding there's NEPA next week.
Do you want to do Thursday? I could do Thursday, but it'd have to be, you know, that for you or two.
Thursday being the twenty-first.
No, NEPA's. Yeah, next, next week is out. If we're trying to meet together as a group.
Yeah.
So not Tuesday, Thursday.
Thursday to twenty-first.
No, I won't be back.
You, are you gonna be up there? Okay.
I'm gonna be up there.
Okay, so that doesn't work. So. When are you coming back, Ray?
Friday, Friday. Yes, I mean, right now, my plan is to stay there through Thursday and come back Friday.
Okay.
I might be able to connect remotely, but.
No, no, that's fine, how, how is Monday the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, anytime the following week is fine, and the week after NEPA is fine.
Monday twenty-fifth is fine, dude, no time.
Yeah, Monday the twenty-fifth at noon.
Okay.
I'll be in a car, but that's okay. You wanna schedule another one while we're here? The twenty-fifth being basically two weeks from now. We might have some more candidates, we have our questions done. We have, so it's just gonna be resume review, definitely, pretty much. Okay, so I think that that works, so.
When's closing, when is closing of resumes? Is that, is that the end of?
So, so I, I think there, there is going to be an extension of the timeline, right? So, so I I think there there is going to be an extension of the timeline, right? Um, because we have to make sure that we get candidates. I've talked to Susan um, above um, and you know, other, other avenues to bring more resumes in. I think we have to, our our committee ends when we feel we have enough. We we put together a schedule, but that schedule is based on who we get, right? So that, that whole schedule keeps getting pushed out until we can start interviewing. And if we don't have people to interview, it just extends, right? And that's just the nature of the way the last time went and the way this time is going to go, right? I get, you get, I get already sent, you know, until we get.
You want to have a good slate of candidates and interview them all close together?
Well, I mean, we 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 haven't, if we have something we like, we can bring them in, but we, you know, we really need a decent pool of of candidates to make a choice for them. So, and we want to get get those folks in. If we, if we don't, if the pool isn't deep enough, then we have to continue to search. So our our timeline will get pushed out based on who we get as applicants. That's TBD, um, I think right now. So even though we we have a framework, that framework is just going to continue to be pushed out until we get enough uh, candidates in. But if we feel like someone's qualified, we absolutely can bring that qualified candidate and interview and let them know that, you know, we are still in process, right?
So what are the dates now?
So our, our next.
Please share this, I've lost track of.
Yeah, it's, so the due date is the twenty-fifth for the, we're gonna, but if we put out um, request for recruiters, as we had talked about.
Yes.
We have to do that according to.
Right, so that takes.
That takes a couple of weeks to get responses and then a couple of weeks to, you know, have them working. So we're going to be hearing from them. I'm already really starting to hear from them because I'm afraid to start working.
Yeah, yeah.
Some correct ads coming. So we'll start to get some people from them and um, and then we'll it it will probably put some language up online. Like you said, if we have candidates that we're talking to, we'll be keeping them warm and keeping them advised. And and we'll identify them early in the process, so.
Yeah.
I think when we, I think when we actively start to get, but this is the way I'm picturing it, you guys can tell me different if it's not the way you want it. But the way I'm picturing it is when we start to get candidates from recruiters as well, we're gonna revisit others that we got from our posting.
Okay.
Really, you know, get that down to, okay, these are the people that we said we would push forward. Um, and then, and then kind of regroup and say, how do we want to change the date on this posting, underwriting on this posting today?
I I would just, right now, I would extend it out probably at least a month. Right? For open applications. All right, so we we do need to review the applications, so um.
We've got to go into executive.
We're gonna go to executive session. Vivek, you want to read the motion or?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, move that RMLD General Manager Search Committee go into executive session. Consider applicants for reviewing resumes and criteria for the General Manager position and returning to the regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
All all those in favor, roll call in a second.
No, Ray, for the right.
Patty, holding down, aye.
Vivek, sunny, aye.
Buckle to right, all right.